Okay, it's Wednesday, October 25th. It's 4:00 PM. We're gonna start the Town and Sagino Select Board meeting. And we'll begin with a Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We also scheduled for this time is a public hearing regarding the water and sewer district basically decoupling. Is that the?
Merger.
It's a merger.
Merger.
Okay. So I make a motion that we recess the select board meeting and we'll leave the recorder going so people can hear this hearing.
Second.
Okay?
Second.
It's 4:01, we're officially recessed and you guys can start your hearing.
So, the sanitary district, water district, I've been looking in the past year, combining both districts into one new district called the Guilford-Sangerville Utility District. Basically doing it as a cost savings. We figured the savings would just manpower alone, be well worth that time, all working together as this new district. We've done great detail work on it already, we've already passed it all the state. Basically what this is gonna come down to is a town vote, both in Guilford and Sangerville, this November, on the 7th. And that's about it. We're here to hear any questions, concerns, anything about the situation, if anybody has any.
I just did, we're actually working with that concept right now. We've lost a position and a half and we've been working, I guess, relative to about seven months now with the staff that we have. And the whole idea is to try to cut the cost of both the water district and sewer district by combining the efforts of the town.
I have some questions.
Sure.
The sewer district has the ability to place a lien on property if you don't pay. I'm thinking of some young families in town. Am I correct that the water district, the water district does not have that ability right now? You can shut the water off, but once you do this, the water, you can place a lien on the property if you don't? Okay.
Yeah, right now, the water district can place a lien on a property.
You can now?
Yes.
Okay.
They just, they really never had.
I know the sewer district has. If the water is unhooked, for instance, somebody wants to unhook it, you can't now charge a quarterly fee, right? Sewer can.
Sewer can, water can, which will stay that same line.
It will stay that same line? And how will the representation be?
Uh, what do you want?
Sagino-Gilford, are you still gonna keep the full boards?
They're gonna form a new board of five appointed members, three from Guilford, two from Sangerville, based on population and system size.
So Sagerville will lose.
That's a state mandate too, there's no way to change that.
That's based on population.
Population. We have to stay with five people, we can't go more than five.
Okay. And how does this, the joining of the two affect the borrowing power from federal government? It would seem to me that it would cut in half if you had just one and not two.
Oh, we'd be a utility district, so we'd have maybe a greater opportunity to look for grants.
Your thing.
Yeah.
And are you having any other hearings? I mean, this one was very much publicized. I heard a lot of people say they didn't realize it was even gonna be helping on you.
It's been talked about a few times here. Jeff has been here, other members of the board.
It's your select men's meeting.
Yeah.
But do you notice nobody, having anybody looks at your online?
We have quite a few people that listen to the tape. I get comments quite regularly about it.
Okay.
Jeff actually spoke at the five years annual town meeting about it, but nobody really listened to it very much.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Got it. Thank you, those were my questions.
Any other questions?
And with that, you wanna close that meeting?
Sure.
So that hearing will end, it's 4:04. And I make a motion that we go back into session with our select board meeting.
Second.
In favor, 4:04, we're back in.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Thanks guys. Do you anticipate another meeting before vote or if you need one, let us know or what are you guys expecting?
We're voting on Thursday, next month.
Okay, alright.
See what happens.
Very good.
And speaking of the vote, it has to go, both towns have to approve, otherwise we're back to the drawing board.
Alright, alright, thank you guys. Item two, approval of the select board meeting minutes, 10-4, 2023.
Second.
All in favor? Item three, review of treasurer's warrants payroll, 92, 93, 94, accounts payable, 87, 88, 89, 90, and 91.
Make a motion to approve A and B as read.
Second.
All in favor? We're all three in favor. We have a number of guests here. This is a, item four is known when we let people speak. Would somebody like to speak tonight? Nope? Okay. This is the, this is the time.
Oh, you're all done with your business?
No.
No, we have more.
We have a whole bunch of stuff to do. This is where we make time for anybody who has a comment or a concern or anything they wanna talk about.
Is it on the agenda about the property of this house in Sagerville? I heard it was.
It is, it's public access.
Oh, which item is that?
6B.
It's 6B.
Okay. Oh yeah, okay, yes.
You wanna jump to it? I think that's the question.
Anybody else? Alright. Item five, old town hall building.
So, we had another workshop and we tabled a couple more ideas as far as modulars or location. And so those individuals were looking into that, but we're gonna have another one on the 6th, at 6 o'clock, workshop. And then that's where we're gonna have to start driving where this is gonna go because we need to either have consensus that we're gonna do one and/or the other and start getting letters of support or consensus on what we're gonna do because if we don't all have consensus, we're not gonna get federal money from congressionally directed funds. And then we're gonna miss out on free money to do what we need. So this is just more of an update as we go through that the next meeting, we're gonna, we really need to put some emphasis on the direction of this.
So this is more the new town office?
That would be more town office as far as if we want free money, we're gonna have to have general consensus to build a new one. And then if not, and we don't have general consensus, we're gonna lose out on that money and that opportunity.
And I mean, my understanding, because Jody's done a fair amount of research on it, we actually could be in a position where the town decides to do this because we need it. But if, if we have disagreement, if you have a group of people that say, "Well, we wish you weren't doing it."
Yeah.
We could, we could still do the project, but miss out on?
On the money.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars.
So what would Gus, you know, say for a small town hall or town office? You know, $400,000 out of pocket might be, you know, a match of $100,000 in congressionally directed funds. They're not gonna have congressionally directed funds necessarily towards updating that, which is gonna be astronomical amount. But there are ideas and they've tabled ideas about, you know, how do we, you know, utilize this and what is the way forward? So there's still some stuff on the table for the old town office and the town hall. And then we still need to put everything together so we can start educating the voter and then make sure the voter understands and then have a workshop. And I'd like to have a workshop programmed in the middle of November or towards the end of November so that we have a workshop for the whole town to hear, you know, what the options are. And then we need to go into vote.
Again, there's two different subjects here.
Yes.
You've kinda given me the precedent, Jody, that we look pretty good in terms of a fit for these funds.
Yes, yes. And again, I think at this point, you know, we would go to item 5B because we're talking about the new town hall.
The office, yes.
With regard to the funding, the congressionally directed funding. And Susan Collins' office, if you go on the website, you can see all the different earmarks for money that it, we, there is one place where we fit very well that, and so, but it, it, the entire town has to be for, for applying for this money and, or it's...
They're not gonna give it.
They will not, they will not grant it.
So would you even go so far to say that if we move in that direction, that we, people get engaged? We, organizations write letters and say, "We think this is a, we want this, help us." Well, they have to because that's, you know, they're not gonna, Collins or whoever we go through, they wanna get reelected as well.
Yeah.
So they're not gonna help fund something that down the road might have a negative effect in any way towards them.
Right.
So that's why it's so...
But even, like, even our fire chief could say, "The fire department supports the idea of this town office." Whole business, anybody.
Well, that's why I put underneath of it is by, by echo, is letters of support, you know? We need to see where the letters of support stand before we even go down the congressionally directed road.
Correct.
Right.
Because there's no sense to waste work hours on doing something that's just, we know is a dead end. And that's where, so the next meeting, that's what we're gonna present is we need to have letters of support that we either want free money or we're gonna go in a different direction. Or the voters are gonna go in a different direction.
Right. And, and the broader, the spectrum of the letters of support, the better. So that's, that's where we are with that.
Okay, that's pretty straightforward.
The next one is the fire department. And I owe the fire department to go to bat for them because I've wanted to get this ordinance in that we build non-residents. So the next, I'd like to be able to present the policy to the board for approval, you know, that we, we get that opportunity to build and recoup some of that money for life cycle. I think it's important that we do. You know, we're not gonna affect the local resident in any manner, it's just the high price tags of out of state. So that's my intent with that, is to present the proposal, the policy and ordinance that we go forward with it.
Has it been written?
It's in draft. I know Jack Klukie's already got his, that's where I got mine, but I need to refine it and I owe Matt that. That's on me. I have, and I need to go to bat for the, the fire department to have that done in my next meeting.
Alright, we look forward to that. Alright, the rules are together. Anything else there?
Not on that.
New business foreclosures?
So, we foreclosed on 6, on the 13th. We have three of them that have been identified to be able to pay. One of them's paid off, number five. Number one, they'll have the monies due on the Friday. I, I would like to recommend that we just go ahead and release it after they've paid and not go forward with the foreclosure.
Right, you also have number four. Michael Nickerson called the office today and he will also have the money in full on Friday. I have not heard anything from Daniel Hurd. However, that's an odd situation because it is a building on his father's land that we actually foreclosed on. So I'm not sure how the board would like to move forward with that one. And we also have Edmund Gould, number two. The sewer district actually took this before us, but municipal trumps the sanitary. So they're waiting to find out what we wanna do. Do they, do you want them to pay us our amount and then they handle the property? Or do you want us to pay them and we handle the property? Getting rid of it. And then the very last one, Sonia True, she still owes, she has made a couple payments and has brought it down to $1,300. I would like to see us put a deadline on her for this one. She's been coming in, but I wanna set a deadline and say, "You need it by Friday."
So for me, you know more about this than I do, but I do remember four or five years ago, we kinda got, we didn't get in trouble, but we was on that edge because we didn't follow part of that procedure the right way. Because we tried to accept a payment and then it ended up in another situation afterwards.
Yep.
So as long as, that's all I wanna say about it, as long as we don't get to that kinda scenario again.
Absolutely. And I have talked to Sonia. I don't think it was very clear to her that we wanted all of the money to pay it off. There is a waiver that we could do as far as they sign it acknowledging that their payment, if it's not paid in full, we could still foreclose. And I need to talk to Trio to see if that can be produced in the program. As far as number two, I think your best bet would be to pay, have the sanitary district pay us and then they would take care of the property.
Okay, okay. Does that sound?
That's what I would say.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With that new ruling, the way this all now works?
There's no money, I mean, you're just gonna get your 453.
Yeah, that's...
There's no more getting any gain of any type with this stuff. It all goes back to the landowner, so let's go.
Right. If you can find him. I've sent certified letters out and I've sent regular mail, thinking, well, maybe he can't pick up the certified. So, and a couple cases that did work, but we've had, heard nothing.
It would become unclaimed property.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Do you, is there anything else that we need to help you with on any of these?
No, I can take care of the rest for you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And so next is the, the public land access. I know I've had conversations with, with the board and some conversations with individuals in the stands about this. And I'll open it up in a second. I've had some great conversations with, with some of individuals of town about this piece of property and access and rights to it. And one of, one of the situations is there is a private landowner, you know, that's concerned, as should be because they, you know, have a right of way in their deed and stuff. The other is the public access to public lands. And it's convoluted because the road was discontinued. You know, main legislature and law says after 30 years, whatever, you know, have discontinued. But then there's wording in there, if the road has been used by the public in the manner in which it was designated for, then, then you don't necessarily lose the right of way. So I feel like it's not a dead issue. I think there needs to be some, some black and white interpretation as we go forward a little bit more. Because I'm not sure if I feel that it, and this is my personal, I don't, I'm not sure if it is actually, you know, we don't have a right of way. We might still have a right of way as far as even just walking in there. Is that the public intended time that it was given up, right? But I also, the landowner owns both sides of the road, so when it was discontinued, that road and the right of way goes back to the landowner. So, you know, that's the situation. And then I've been, I've gone in and looked at old reports to see when we voted to discontinue the road, how it was meant and intended to be discontinued, interpret legislature and law. And so I'm doing all that because before we do anything and I ask us to get any legal matter involved, I need to make sure that it's all black and white and I've presented to everybody the situation. So I still have some more notes and reports to go through in the town hall because I found them last week in a box in the corner, back to 26. That state that they voted on that, and voted actually for the, a bridge and an update to the swamp, right? So...
26.
1926. So that, I mean, because it's gotta walk the situation all the way up to current times and when and if that didn't dissolve. Or when the USDA did give us the land and then terminated the agreement and then sold it back to us for a dollar, was that the road that was actually intended to be the right of way? Where is the defined right of way? So that's where I'm at right now. And then I, I'll open up. I would like to have Mr. Newt because he's a private landowner and he's kinda really concerned about his opportunities there. And then we can open it up to everybody, but I'd like to have him have the opportunity first.
Sure.
Well, I've only used it for 63 years and I understand I have prescriptive rights. And anybody that I employ could use it when needed. And I resent having, having it blocked off with a gate. I don't see why the new owner can't gate his own property beside the road, not down at the end of the road. That's about all I got to say. But I, we've come from the registry of deeds, but didn't find any written access on mine or, and I'm curious about the town-owned land, whether that deed has any... And I think Bruce said that they did.
So in that deed for the town and the public use, it says, "All rights and easements will transfer if any." So the last two words, "if any," that's where I'm trying to find out where, from that time, if there was any and where those right of ways are, right? Because it might not be that road and that's the trouble that I'm finding.
There's no other access in there. The town road stops what was, what was the Breeden Road.
Right.
Which is at the town property, well, then Breeden property. There's no other access in there. Obviously, La Guevara's number, that's way underwater.
Right.
So there's no, there's no one other access. You also gotta keep in mind through all this, those old town roads, when they were discontinued, they were still meant for the use, particularly if the landowners in there. But this is long before, this whole business of everything being litigious and blocking things off because I own, like this guy said, I own both sides of the road and I'm gonna keep everybody out. That wasn't the intent. This is long before everybody got all kinds of litigious. We've been using, my brother and I hunted down there since we were little kids. My father owned the backside of all that property and he put the road in, which you show, you can see on the, on the aerials now. But you go back to, I've got the 1880 Atlas, and that town road stops right on the Breeden Road, here. So the only access to that, in particular, now that the government has said it's to remain open to the public, but that's always been everybody's access into all that land back there. It always has been there, not just the last 10 years, not the last 30, but since everything got discontinued. Which from my research, starting back in about 1935, thereabouts, those roads were discontinued, there was three different discontinuations. And they've been used all this time up until a few weeks ago. Now all of a sudden, this guy's saying, "No, we're not gonna let you have any more access."
Yep.
Now we get into the prescriptive easement and that's why that term came about. Because back in 1960s, when everything got litigious, that's how they came up with this perspective, prescriptive easement.
Yep.
And it's because everybody had been using these various properties all this time. Now, if there was some other access, well, then now you, now you got a whole different issue going on.
Right.
But there is no other access in there. And also if the town decides that they don't wanna fight this thing, because it says right in the deed from the government to the, to the town, if you abandon their requirements, you gotta put it back to the government.
Goes back to the USDA.
Guarantee they'll fight it. It'll be more likely that they will.
Well, from what we're dealing with, when it comes to US government, it'll probably sit on a shelf forever and they won't even...
Possibly, but not necessarily. It depends on what they wanna do and obviously who's in administration. But the point is, this land has been accessed for years and years, over 70 years.
Right.
So...
So the, and when you go back and look at the terminology in discontinued, you know, is there a fight to be able to say that this easement or right of way in the road has been used in the same manner that it was intended from the time that it was, the land or it was, the time it was established? Because if you, then you actually have more ground to stand on because you can prove that when that road was still abandoned, I mean, there was definitely more horses going in through there than there were Model As, right? You know? So, so in foot traffic, it was probably used in that mannerism and that intent. So, I mean, those are some of the things that I've, I've got to, like, just been trying to hammer down and go in and look at the old maps. I started with 1814 with that map and then started tracking back with the deeds and those individuals and what those right of ways say. And they all say the same thing, any and all easements and right of ways transfer until you get to the government one that says, "If any." And then you get into that convoluted mess of, was that the right of way? Was that the government's intended right of way? And is it still being used in the intent?
There was no other right of ways at the time. There was no other access to that lane at the time.
Yeah.
Well, that's, yeah, that's a fact. There's no other, there was no other access in there at that time in 1955 when the government took it, gave it to the town.
When did the bog bridge go up?
Excuse me?
When did the bog bridge drop?
Oh geez, that's then, Wilson. How long goes that then? I mean, our, our great uncle used to haul gravel to that.
Well, in the 30s is all I know, in the 30s.
And that's just, that was a constant, that's part of the reason why they discontinued that section.
Well, the town report in 1926 voted on if they wanted to rebuild the bridge or not.
Right.
So, wasn't even in the 30s.
So what about, I know the trail used to be a road that goes from like that part over to McNaughton Hill, is that all that ever was?
That's still, that's a still accessible road.
Sure, but that's, but was that actually deemed as a road or was that just the way?
From Wilson's place, all the way to Sangerville, that was the main route from, basically from the Grange to the Grange, he sang it.
Right, but I mean, when the bog was there, but when, when the bog went out is, so that really isn't, they changed that road to go that way?
Well, that was that timeframe, that whole 10, 20 year timeframe when the world wars were going, because this property was bought by the government in the 40, early 40s. And that is by a very specific, it talks about it in their, in the government deeds of Sangerville. But there was an act to buy up basically these old farms.
Yep.
And that's how this town of Sagerville got these five pieces. And they were buying up all these old farms and discontinuing because the industrial age was coming on and they didn't wanna make, and the towns didn't wanna maintain these roads. So it was all kinda happened at the same time and historically.
Right.
And then obviously, La Guevara kept sinking and sinking and sinking. Like I say, our great grand, our great uncle used to haul gravel into that every year.
But one might question though, so that access to get from McNaughton Hill down into that property, that, is that a legitimate access too?
No.
No.
No, because this property is way before, it's way after La Guevara. Yeah, you drive down McConville Road from East Sangerville, say, or the Brockway Mills Road.
Yeah.
And you go down.
I drove through there, but you...
You go down La Guevara and then you gotta cross the bog and you come up on Wilson's way.
Right, but I mean, now, that's what I was trying to say is when that went down, there's actually a trail, road, or whatever you wanna call it. You can drive from McNaughton Hill down through, you go to the, when you come up McNaughton Hill, you go to the left, you drive right out around.
That's all private land.
That's all private.
Okay. So that's what I'm saying, that's not actually part of the...
That was never part of the town.
Okay, that's my question.
Part of the town road and, like I say, I'm bothered with that, then we're not sure when, but...
Lance Burgess could tell you when that was done.
Yep. Well, if it was never part of the town or part of the right of way, it doesn't matter.
No.
It's a nice road though.
Yeah, I'm just gonna get through, but this, this one, he owns all that now, so this guy.
Yep.
So...
Can I ask a question? If the Maine has an abandoned and discontinued road commission, they can be utilized as a resource. I mean, they were formed just because this type of issue, right, is universal across the state.
Right, they have, both of them have different meanings. Abandoned means that you still keep your right of ways.
Right. Right, there's different meanings, discontinued or abandoned, but they deal with both.
Right.
This commission, but I think there would be a resource to get further clarification on how to handle this.
So I found, I, I, I found some, some reports. Continue, I've discontinued or maintenance. Um, but I haven't, I haven't been able to find any that are identifying this route. And so I need to go, try to go back into the hall and see if I can find these reports, and then the select board meetings. Then discuss, you know, what they voted. Cause I, from my understanding on some of it is. It was abandoned in twenty-six, and then they tried voting to discontinue it later on. So those, that's where I'm trying to go through whatever's in that old building to find what is in black and white.
But anything prior to sixty-eight reverts back to landowner.
Right.
Today, if you abandon a road or discontinue a road, public easement remains, period. So, and that was on purpose, because you're not dealing with mess like this.
Right, but the intent back in, up to sixty-eight, like I said, the intent was not to keep. So that one person could control all this land out back there.
But.
That was not the intent.
Intent is argued in a court.
Well, that's exactly, that's exactly the whole point of all of this, is actually, is not for any of us to say.
Correct. What this is gonna require is a war chest. We're gonna, for you to spend a ton of time on this, other than education is. But none of this is gonna be solved, other than they go to court. And the town is gonna decide how much of a war chest they wanna build to fight this. That's what's gonna happen. Otherwise, nothing's gonna happen.
Well, then at that point in time, nothing's gonna happen, you might just turn it back over to the government.
Well, and that might happen automatically, but I don't think that you're gonna litigate this for just a few hundred dollars. This is going to require a fair amount of money. So that's, it's a budget issue, and we really can't even do anything until next year. And, and that, that would be a line item on the warrant. So we'll do some research, try to get what would be a realistic amount of money. We're gonna have to talk to. We're gonna have to talk to a real estate attorney and, and say, you know. What's it gonna take to even start this conversation? And the town might decide it's not worth chasing. They might decide to go get it. But there really isn't anything we can do until next year.
Well, I will, I, I have one contact for, it's a, it's a nonprofit, Backcountry Hunters and Anglers. And they deal with public access and public rights to, to public land through this exact scenario. And so I'll send them an email, just asking them, can you give us some guidance on where this is? You know, there's public land in there, but, you know, they, they, the public. You know, if there's a legal right of way, has the right to go in there. And so I, I'll send the email to Backcountry Hunters and Anglers and see what kind of guidance.
I think you need to be real careful about just trying to find this legal right of way, because there is none. There isn't, because I chased this way back from before the state was even a state.
Oh, the prescriptive easement.
Prescriptive easement, that's why they, they developed that, because again, back in the sixties, when all this litigiousness started. Then they came up with this law, people have been using this for all these years. No one person's going to prevent that from happening.
And I wonder too, shouldn't, can't reach out to USDA? Cause I, I mean, this program, we're not the only ones. This is a national program. There is just tons of land that are in this. No, there is.
There's tons, tons of it that is, is landlocked.
Well, I would reach out to them.
Yeah, oh, I, no, I.
But I've, I've, I've looked into some of these cases, it's pretty uh, surprising. What length some of these judges will put the land on. In other words, I've, I've seen cases where, yeah, you have a right in, but you gotta walk. What do you mean? It's fifteen miles. That's, you're right. I mean, doesn't mean you're gonna get vehicle traffic in there. No, I'm not making a prediction on this, but these things, they drag on and on and on. Particularly if people have deep pockets. So I just.
Quite frankly, the, the clock started when he put that gate up. Because he's hoping that nothing happens, because after twenty years. Then everybody's screwed. Wilson knew screwed, everybody screwed. I mean, the, the, an injunction could be put on at some point in time, but time is of the essence.
Yeah, and each, uh, each entity's got their own fight. I mean, we, we can't, we have an interest, because we have land in there that was given to us by the federal government, but we can't. We can't dispute his case, or your case, or somebody else's case, so there could be multiple cases going on here regarding this one landowner. That's very possible.
Not sure how, but.
Well, in other words.
The prescriptive easement is going to apply to everybody in there. Because all the landowners, which aren't that many in that particular area.
I, I, maybe. I would suspect that the judge might look at those individually. But a farmer that's been in there every single summer, cutting hay, might have a different argument than someone who's hunted up there a few times.
This would go down.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. All of it's gonna come down to a judge.
Who's got, who knows what they're talking about, and we can talk all night long about it.
That's, that's my point.
Exactly.
Yep.
Exactly.
So between now and next town meeting, we'll try to put together what a realistic number would be, and the town will decide whether they wanna pursue it.
So the bottom line to this is that the road is blocked.
The owner has blocked the road currently. That's my understanding.
And that's gonna be allowed until something happens.
Well, the all you, I mean, we had a case, remember?
Yeah.
It was a gate, it was, this was between two private, we didn't own any land down there, but they came to the town because it was previously a town way. They wanted us to pull the gate up. Like, we're, we're not gonna go pull out somebody's private property in a dispute between two landowners. So if somebody goes up there and moves the fence out of the way, it's not gonna be the town, I can tell you, but.
I'm not suggesting.
So I don't know how else it happens. But things like that do happen sometimes.
Yeah.
But I, I don't see this select board doing anything like that.
No, no, I'm, I'm not suggesting that.
Yeah, maybe get the town a, until we know the definitions. Yeah, we just not gonna.
But hopefully, and like you say, that we do diligence to research all of the options there are. And, and, and even reaching out to this road commission to see what resources, USDA, anything.
Well, and then also.
Put this on a faster track than just waiting.
There's, there's, we're kinda in a silo, because each one of us has been working on some of it.
Yes.
So it's almost like the town hall, we, we probably ought to have four or five that have all the information. Or has pieces of information for us to come together. And then, you know, as, as we go through, I, I'll try to find more stuff, but if we have a committee or a group come together. That has this information to try to, to put it all into a piece, to, that way we can give a better recommendation. That's how my recommendation would be.
Can we form a committee?
Form one right now. You know, anybody wants to get together to see what we can do and take the information and. Put it all together so it communicates all the way. So, you know, we're not, we're not going in that. Conversation circle that it's, here it is, and, and this is the recommendation from us to go forward, and we request this be put on to, to actually litigate.
And that's why, to me, getting a number. We need to reach out to. Town's attorney, I'm sure they'll have a real estate specialist there, and.
Find out what it costs.
Yeah, an estimate. What does it cost to get the ball rolling? And what, would you expect the end game might be?
And then.
And then we can make a decision.
Then in the meantime, once while we're doing that, we, you know, we'll, the four or five of us that wanna sit and try to put the information together while I talk to the attorney. Then we can talk to them about it and go forward.
Is that informal, or does it have to be a business of, of this group?
Well, I don't know if it needs to be formal or informal, but I, I think, you know, the, the interested groups. Individuals, we, we just come together and we, you know.
Wouldn't drop off what you can. You can try to pool all the information together, and then you would have everybody's names or whatever.
Yeah.
Let them know, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about it, and you guys just do it.
I'll just put a blank piece of paper up here, and we just put our names down, and we're up back and. And then, uh, we'll put it on your, on, on the sign-in sheet, when you sign in. Just put your information on there, and then I'll blast out an email about, you know, what time, what time works for everybody and.
So you'd facilitate that?
Well, it'd be more than that.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Yep.
It wouldn't hurt, seems like at this point.
And when we get, as, as we start a dialogue on what kind of money is involved, we will communicate that with you guys, so.
Yeah, that's part of important information.
That's gonna be the whole thing, is my, what I anticipate.
Yeah, and it, obviously that would be an issue, but then you look at other resources that might save money or even prevent you from having to spend.
Right.
And there's always an agreement or negotiation between the landowner to settle something that's more reasonable than what he's. What line he's drawn in the stand, in the sand, because that's completely unreasonable. I mean, you have a, a butter to that abandoned town road. That this gentleman is dictating, how often he can go there and who he can bring in there, which is. Just, it doesn't reach any amount of fairness.
Well, any, anybody that want, you know, anybody wants to sit with me, and we put all this stuff. And walk, walk the dog on all of it before we present it, and then we talk to the attorney and all that. Then just put your name and, and. And email, phone number or something up back, and. We'll figure out when works best, and we'll, we'll do a workshop. I think that's one way we need to even start facilitating to come together to get a, an answer.
Get hurt. We'll be tied to other.
Why don't you not have the town's name involved, please? Town's not involved, like we said. That's our sole interest.
Any, any other comments on, on that part of it?
Do you have any comments?
Well, I think there might be a. He might be reasonable in making an agreement. This is my hope. Because I think the first time I met him, he wanted to buy my land. And I won't sell it. And so I think part of this might be he's putting a squeeze on me to sell it. And he's cut right up to my line, and the line trees are marked with a blaze, blaze marks. And they're gonna interrupt his airflow, airstrip. So you see what I mean?
I, I will, because it's about a record. He, he did try to buy the town's land. We're not allowed, we're not legally allowed to sell it, so we didn't present that offer to the town, because it wasn't something you could even do. But he, he had expressed an interest in that land. And to my dollars, we still can. We, we, I think we could get it back, but we can't sell it, so. So, okay, anything, are we good?
I got one quick question.
Sure.
That land, I understand, was in tree growth, very platinum?
I don't know.
Yeah, it was.
Could the town rake in a nice chunk of change from that?
I don't know what he's, I don't.
He did reach out to Hamilton.
Yeah, biomass, I don't know what he did there.
Took some property out of the tree growth, I don't remember if that is the particular one. But I know recently we have taken property out of tree growth. Yeah, you do have to pay some back taxes on that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you take it out, there is, yep, there is a.
But if a new landowner buys it and takes it out of, it, does the tree growth go with the land when you purchase it?
I think, I think there is a, a give back, if you wanna change its status.
So even that clawback through the, even.
I believe so.
Post of past ownership.
Now, there is a open spaces option.
There's an agricultural option. You can move from tree growth into one of these other things, and you still get a. Tax reduction, and you don't have to pay a penalty, so I'm not sure. But I don't remember any of those coming across us.
That would be something to look into.
Uh, I did speak to him.
If it did, it was before my, uh.
He seemed knowledgeable. He also, uh, he has a, a real estate attorney in Bangor. So my guess is it's not, it's just not, you know, a frivolous strategy here. I'm, I guess it's reasonably well thought out, but we'll, we'll see.
He is an attorney, and he has an attorney.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, he just, he's gonna make see everybody blink, that's all.
Yeah, I, I, but I just, I'm sure, I'm sure it's exactly correct.
So it is, you know, how much money is the town willing to spend to fight this, and if we can? I'm sure he knows as well as we know what happens if we can't allow town access. We lose it, so.
And he has a real estate property division too, and he's. So.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I'm sure they know what they're doing. Doesn't mean that there isn't an avenue for us, but I just. It's, so, okay. Item C, check balance policy.
So, Michelle. Uh, has been going through the policies and ordinances, and this one has been updated. Uh, we, we want a select board approval. It was fifteen dollars, and now the, the normal is thirty. So we, it's, hasn't been updated for over.
Have we asked a bit of revenue increases as a result of this policy change?
Uh, we believe so.
Yeah, okay.
But it hasn't been, it's been the whole of twenty years that we, so we, we request that.
Is that a policy?
It is.
Yes, we got a motion.
Okay, you made the motion?
No, I said we need to make.
Oh, right, right, right. Is that all we're, we need to make a motion to update that?
And then there's another motion, yes, we do need to make.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the check cashing, check cashing policy for bounce checks from fifteen to thirty. Second. All in favor?
And then we got cemetery deed. This is a, an exception to the agenda. Two individuals of town have requested a cemetery deed and approval by the board, and then I'll sign it.
All right, that's. That would be you.
Okay. So I will make a motion to, uh, sell the plot forty-four lot B. Um, and this is in, I just wanna, hang on, French's Mill Cemetery. That's my motion.
Second. All in favor? Lot is sold. Um, item E, fire hall use.
Uh, so the historical society is going through, and they're gonna host it dinner next Monday. Um, they, they got the fire chief on use of the hall. I just wanna make sure that. If, if there's gonna be fire use by any committees that are going through the chief. And that he's approving it, it's, it's his facility, it's his building, and I think it needs to be for official town use, and he, he signs the block.
We actually already, there's already a policy in place.
Yeah.
When we were forced out of that, this is, this is as ad needed facility. Uh, we got personal items here, safety items, so. I mean, it's dinner next week, you're gonna attend. I'm gonna try to attend, but for the most part, we already have a policy that. It's officially used only.
Reiteration.
Yeah.
Wasn't there something about public use as far as the building, as far as insurance?
I don't remember. I just know that at that time, it was discussed and. That was the best policy.
Yep. So moving on, uh, my report pulled up the ducks last week out of both public landings.
You did?
Mm-hmm. You said this was gonna happen.
I haven't taken my boat out yet. See, but there's more room for you. Plus, it's not frozen, you're not used to it heavily.
That'd be a little chilly. Good job. Parks, Parks Committee, we, we met last week, and there was a good little turnout, and then I have actually established. Uh, some walking trails from the dam towards the road, and then we're gonna start working our way back. Uh, waiting for the planning board to approve. The road down towards the, the dock, uh, the public landing, uh, as soon as the planning board, that's the only little section we need approved by them. And then I walked in with one of the contractors, putting a new road in, and we're gonna start doing an estimate on what that'll take. I am gonna try to do as much of the labor as I possibly can. The Parks Committee is taking some volunteers and names. We're gonna meet again next week and then try to get those, so we can start this project in December. And if there's, at that time, I'm gonna ask if there's any money for, from the roads and road maintenance, if we can utilize that towards that road. Because it all fits into the public, but I wanna make sure all the road work is done before we, I use any of the other stuff.
So when we talked about this a few years ago. When we talked about moving that road over to that other side, so you can go straight in for the water access. We also talked about moving the boat ramp over to. That kinda, so like you have the swimming part here, and then move the boat ramps over.
that kinda, so like you have the swimming part here and then move the boat ramps over to here instead of here where they are now, to keep it all over there, and I believe it was Bridy. And there was some state money for projects like that as far as the ramps go, as far as the docks and, and even some of the construction.
So inland fisheries and wildlife will, has grants for public docks and public landings. And it's a twenty-five percent match. And I, I just got the information from the director of outdoor rec and tour. And so I'm gonna start tapping into that and see. The way we've designed it is that that wouldn't move, but it would be separated from the ball fields. So you would have the loop go all the way around for the boats, but then the, 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 uh, sports and that, and the fields would be separated from the boat ramp access. And then there would still be plenty of packing for the boats. And then that would leave the opportunity for the beach to be improved and go for a DAP permit. Uh, and I've talked to Lance about all this and then be able to clean that area up and make it a legitimate beach for people to go to. And, and the utilization of less than desirable individuals is actually, it's starting to go down because there's more foot traffic.
I would say daylight is gonna make a use of it.
Uh.
Yeah, open.
We also, with the pox and rec committee, we're gonna, we have a Christmas tree donated. We're gonna put a, a date on the, the calendar for a Christmas tree lighting and a little event thing to kinda kick off the pox and rec, uh, situation, you know? And we have the pirate wreck involved with communicating with us on when, you know, they're gonna have their sporting events and their youth things as opposed to also when we start ramping up some of the other stuff and get things, utilization rate in there. That's pretty much the gist of the pack, I mean, we're, we're really ramping up some of the use.
So, you've made, you, you're getting a road estimate? Okay, uh, soon or?
Um, soon and it's looking to be around twenty.
Okay.
Twenty thousand, but I want to, before I request, cause I do wanna request if there's any leftover for road maintenance, but I wanna make sure all the roads are taken care of before winter time and then if something's left over, then we reallocate it to the zero sum before fiscal years are over.
So the planning, when's the next planning board meeting? Third day, next, the second Thursday? Tomorrow?
Yes.
It's the end of the month?
It is, cause I'm not ready for tomorrow and I'm gonna miss it.
Oh, it is tomorrow?
I'm pretty sure, I looked on the calendar, I thought it was tomorrow.
It's usually like the second Thursday.
I thought it was gonna be the second Thursday.
Yeah, yeah.
Thought it was gonna be the eighth or ninth or somewhere in there.
Right. So are you hopeful that you will?
The only reason we didn't get the approval is they didn't have a quorum the last planning board. We would've had it and we could've already started cutting it on that side, on that water side. Now we can do everything we want to from the dam down, because it's outside of that. Yeah, and so I might just start that. And then the plan is also any of the hardwood will be cut into cordwood and then we wanna take names for families that need firewood, not want firewood, need it. Um, and then we, we donate it and help them. And then any of the, any of the softwood evergreens that we use, I wanna keep so we can use those for docks and boardwalks and, and such. That's the plan going forward with all of that.
Oh, that's very good.
Uh, also want to request a financial audit. Now, the end of the year audit's coming, so do we wanna just encompass that all in one? Or do we wanna do an individual audit now and then at the end of the year?
How much does an audit cost? I mean, do we?
I, I would reach out to our auditor because they've dealt with this.
Yes.
Yeah, and I.
So ask them exactly what they've done.
You might know the answer. I think, I think when you change pilots, I think you're supposed to do an audit, right?
Right.
You should.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To, to set.
So I, I.
But I don't think it's the full blown same as the year end.
No, I don't think so.
So that's why I would separate, I would do what you need to do and then still maintain the end of the year or budgets.
Yeah, there's, uh, this, there's precedent for doing that level of audit and I would support you doing that.
Like you said, it's that close to the end, so whatever we do now, I think it's gonna help us.
Probably not gonna be a total duplication.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
And then we've had, uh, for the new position that's been announced for town clerk, we've had, uh, five applicants submit resumes so far. So I'm gonna keep it open for a little bit longer. I'd like to have, if, if we can get ten, then that gives me a good portfolio to kinda go through and filter down to best qualified. And then I'm gonna be asking for a board to sit together, uh, and do interviews, so it won't be just me. Then we take the subjectivity out of it.
I wouldn't do that. Not for a clerk, they're gonna report to you, it's your call. It's part of your role.
That, I would be leaning that way.
I mean, it's no different than a deputy clerk, it's nothing, that's not a public opinion. That's what we pay you for.
Okay.
No, I mean, seriously.
No, and they answer to you.
I see you no different as a manager anywhere else, that's part of your role is to.
And you, you're talking about us? Or are you talking about the greater public, the, the, this group?
Yeah.
Because that's not, that's not how it works.
No.
Okay.
No, it's your.
Okay.
No, in fact, there's, there's actually some potential liability there, I would even, that's your, that's your deal.
And I wouldn't, really, I wouldn't worry about the number of applicants, how long have you had that job posted?
Oh, five days.
Yeah.
So if you do, you do a couple of weeks and you have, you've already got five, at the end of two weeks, you should be able to, you know, if you review them and you don't have a candidate that you wanna pick, then you go two more weeks.
Okay.
But at the end of two weeks and you have a candidate that you wanna pick, I would go, I wouldn't, I wouldn't complicate it.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, and then another, by exception, there's two different trainings that I'd like to send the clerks to. One of them is on the ninth of November. Uh, I'd like to request to make the close, that's a Thursday, so on the ninth, close the office and open it on Wednesday. And then we send the clerks to this, this, it's a live webinar, it's thirty dollars and then I send the clerks to this. And then in December, there's more training that I'd like to request send them to.
Your call.
That's it'll be yours.
That's on the ninth?
Uh, that is, yep.
Just, you know, you'll, you'll put it on the website, I put it on the door, people will know you're gonna be closed, the schedules change, but I think you're right on track.
We'll also post it in the post office. Okay, very good.
Yep.
Roads, uh, they were paving, trench paving yesterday. They're to be done this week over on Silver's Mills.
Double thank you. You only got one to deal with, I got all.
And then, uh, I did do a ride around with a contractor and we punch listed the last remaining four or five roads that are gonna get graded and they're gonna be done before frost and then they'll drop back and start ditching again. So everything's gonna be, the intent is everything will be graded before winter.
Ground, did you look at Thomas?
We did.
Okay, only because Thomas is in town, so typically it gets, it drops off the list.
It's on the west.
Perfect.
It is on the west.
And I only.
And I have had individuals come into the office and ask me when we're gonna grade it, so.
Okay.
No, Thomas always gets dropped.
Yeah, because it's in town.
No, I, I, we got it on the west and Scott's gonna go down there and take and grade it up, clean it up. And then we also did punch list of things that are gonna start taking place next year. That's it, for me.
Selectmen's concerns?
No.
Um, I just wanted to get on the record, I had, I was reached out to by a reporter. Um, a reporter for, of all papers, the Wall Street Journal. The story regarding the former clerk that appeared in the Observer somehow made it to this person's attention. And he called me, wanted to comment, I, I have not called him back. When that original story came out, I, I did share the fact that, uh, her status had changed back in May, it wasn't a new thing. So I couldn't see any point in us getting involved in another story. So I just, I just wanted you guys to know, like, he made an inquiry, so we, there may be an article where the select board was reached out to and at this point, I haven't responded unless you think we should, but I just.
Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't respond, it's, it's inaccurate really, um.
I just wanted you to know that it was.
Yeah, very inaccurate.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll just gonna leave it at that and, and I don't know that the story will ever happen, but that's.
That's interesting.
Yeah, I was, first I thought I was being a prank.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Um, okay, uh, I don't have anything else. We've got a, uh, we're gonna do a sixty day review for the town manager and that's typically done in executive session. So I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session under one MRSA four oh five A, which is personnel, effective at five o'clock.
The mic is a second?
All in favor, we are now in executive session.